Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor Council meeting for Monday, January eighth, 2024. Please join us in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I actually have two corrections, minor corrections in the minutes.
Go ahead.
And I actually already talked to Kate about them, but for the record, page eleven, in the packet, the first paragraph, where it says, "Mayor Tyndall, the fiscal years at the end should be," I believe they should be reversed, twenty-five and twenty-seven, very minor. And on page twelve, under number four, under discussion, the third sentence there, twenty-twenty-three ARPA funds, there's just an extra couple numbers in there.
Total one, second if you don't mind. So page eleven?
Page eleven is the top paragraph, started with Mayor Tyndall.
Okay, yes, thank you.
And page twelve is under number four, discussion, there's just a typo with the year, twenty-twenty-three. And that's, that's all.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Horace to approve the consent agenda with the changes to the minutes as noted. And the second by Councilmember Nerr. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that all council members are present, with the exception of Vice President Barret. Up next is agenda item number two, an announcement regarding the William Street Pump Station Upgrade Project Recommendation of Acceptance, and Town Administrator Mayor Bowlin and Water Resources Director Jamie Lachlan are going to run point.
Essentially, we're following up on recommendations by D V L to go ahead and accept the William Street Pump Station with a warranty beginning December eighth, 2023, is fairly standard practice. Anything to add?
That's usually, if we're bounding, it's in their contract for a two-year warranty period. So what they were completed of all the punch list items, we'll revisit it about November twenty-five to make sure there's nothing substantially wrong with what they replace or repair.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you both. Up next is agenda item number three, and that's a discussion regarding the fire company's request for the reallocation of FY twenty-three ARPA funds for their capital expenses, principal for two pieces of fire apparatus. We did have our meeting with the fire company in December, just before the holiday. During that meeting, we discussed the potential release of the ARPA funds for their capital expenses as requested. I know there was some discussion among the group on whether or not that should include an MOU, or whether or not we should release or hold off for a period of time. So this is an opportunity to either discuss or make a motion regarding the release.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we release the FY twenty-three ARPA funds as per the contract to the fire company, Berlin Fire Company.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Horace to release the ARPA funds for capital expenses, which include a principal payment for their two pieces of apparatus.
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Green.
Could you state the amount?
Yes, I don't have the amount.
It's in the letter.
Do you have it? Go ahead. Finance Director has it?
It's a hundred thirty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Do you want me to amend my?
Yeah, would you?
So I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve the FY twenty-three ARPA amount to the Berlin Fire Company in the amount of one thirty-six thousand, nine sixty and eighty-two cents.
For the purpose, for the purposes of a principal payment for two pieces of apparatus.
Yes.
And the second was made by Councilmember Green.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the release passageway ends, so thank you. Up next is agenda item number four, items for approval. We have a motion, twenty-twenty-four dash zero one, special one-day permit application for the Berlin Fire Company for the Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner. I don't see them present, but I think we're all on the same page. So we'll open it up for any public comment. No public comment. We'll open it up for comment from the council. If not, we'll accept the motion to approve.
Motion approved, the one-day permit application.
So I have a motion to approve motion twenty-twenty-four dash zero one by Councilmember Nerr.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Green. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Let the record reflect that agenda item four A, motion twenty-twenty-four dash zero one, passageway ends. Can you text David, somebody, Fitzgerald or call the fire office nineteen-seventy-seven and just tell him that there's no need to come up? Four-one-oh-six-four-one, nineteen-seventy-seven.
I can text him, I got it.
Thank you. Up next are reports from the town administrator and departmentalists.
The only thing that I have is fairly quick, just a reminder that most town offices will be closed on Monday, and Dr. Mark will be taking over today.
Thank you. Any questions for the town administrator or regarding the departmentalists?
Yeah, I did have some.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just have, I think several bullets was New Year's Eve was mentioned, and I wanted to talk, have a discussion with Ivy and anybody else. You know, so I was down there. Obviously, I'd seen a lot of town resources, a lot of folks, frankly, standing around, you know, during the event, because it's a long, limited duration event. But I wanted to talk to Ivy, and I noticed the crowds for the adult ball drop seemed to be down, and I wanted to see what Ivy's perspective was on this. And, you know, definitely curious also as far as the resources for this. The kids' ball drop was, I thought, very well attended, very exciting, very fun. But I think the New Year's Eve ball drop, the adult drop, and I know this was about four or five years ago, it came up as a potential where it actually was not in the budget at one time. So I wanted to, and then it was reinstated, just hear from Ivy on this event, what some thoughts were, also, if available, any sort of expenses that we see associated with the two different drops and the kind of thing.
Sure. Thanks, Steve. Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
The, so the evolution of the New Year's Eve celebrations started with an idea that I believe Barb Stack had, I don't know, over a decade ago, maybe fifteen years ago, to do a New Year's Eve ball drop on New Year's Eve at midnight, and it was, it was a great success. We didn't have as many restaurants downtown. It, it, it started off slow, and then it built over the years. And then Councilmember Tom Goulias had the idea to have a more family-friendly ball drop at six o'clock, which is the exact time of midnight in Berlin, Germany. So that worked out. So we started to do what's called the kids' ball drop at six P M., and we also kept the midnight ball drop. And the kids' ball drop was wonderful. I mean, over the years, it's just grown, you know, minus the COVID years, of course. But this year was, I think, the busiest it's ever been, and I wouldn't even call it the kids' ball drop anymore, because I, I saw a lot of locals there that, that they don't have kids, and they just wanted to come down and be with their neighbors and, and join with the energy that that kind of an event brings and the crowd. The, the businesses were busy. People, families came before and had dinner, they did some shopping, and then they stayed. And then other families who didn't eat before stayed and ate at the restaurants. We circled, and I was looking inside each of the restaurants all night just to see how the business, how the businesses were doing, and they were doing, I mean, they were doing amazing until probably about eight o'clock. Eight o'clock is when the crowd started to die down a little bit. But the kids' ball drop crowd stretched from Rain's Reef all the way to Sisters. It was, it was really busy for the kids' ball drop, and people seemed to really like that event. What we did this year is we wanted to add some things to try to keep people coming back. We had noticed, noticed over the years that for the midnight ball drop, people were coming down maybe at eleven-thirty, they were partying at home or maybe in some of the bars, and they would come out and watch the ball drop and then either go home or go back into the bar. But this year, even with the addition of the two live bands, the bands that played from seven-thirty till, right till ten o'clock, we thought that, you know, by hearing the music, people would come out, and the crowds just weren't there for the midnight, for the midnight ball drop. It was surprising. I really thought that it was going to be a great midnight event, especially because the weather was with us. It had been a while since people had come down to celebrate New Year's Eve, but, you know, some of the bars weren't even open on that night. I know that Sisters wasn't open, Village Lounge had a private event, J and M, they were open for dinner, but then they closed afterward. So usually, the idea of having the midnight ball drop was to booze the restaurants and the bars, people would come down and hang out all night. Didn't seem to happen as much this year. And, and, you know, it's a shame. I mean, the, the six P M. ball drop is definitely where it's at right now.
So, and to answer your question, staff are on from what time to what time?
Right. So I worked, so there's a, the sequence of events, you know, every hour, there's something. So at twelve noon, we close the roads, then at one P M. the stage arrives, and then the vendors arrive, and then we have to set up, you know, Tim's crew has to set up the electric and hook up the stage. And so I'm the supervisor for that whole event, so I'm there from twelve noon till about one A M. that day. And I know that Jimmy, I think Jimmy, both Jimmy and Cody were there about the same amount of time, because as directors, and Tim had three there, but as directors, we're salary, we don't, we don't get paid overtime or anything like that, it's part of our job. And, you know, and I was happy to be there. But I know that staff, from, from about, what, seven P M. till eleven P M., there really wasn't much for staff to do there.
And I believe that both Tim and Jimmy are prepared this evening to discuss some of the expense involved in that. Those are numbers that you want to?
So aside from the salary, staff, like yourself, how many hourly employees were there, did you say?
That would be a question for my department. My department, we run the event, but it's their departments who actually, you know, they're on the roof dropping the ball, they're in the bucket truck dropping the ball. So that would be a question for Jimmy, Tim, and Jamie.
Go ahead and speak to the overtime costs. This is one of, just so that everybody's aware, it's one of our more expensive events, given the overtime costs and the duration of the event.
It is a telepathic, that plays into the amount of overtime costs.
So, yeah. What was different about this event was the kids' ball drop. They had a laser show involved in it with a big screen. Steve, I'm sure you were aware of it. It took a lot to set that up. We had to have two bucket trucks sitting in the road from like one o'clock, from one o'clock P M. till like midnight. There's two trucks sat in the road. One was, the one truck was holding the big screen across the roadway. Then we had to run all of the cover plates, put all the wire into the covers that people walked over to make sure they don't trip. So that was a long process, setting that up. So I had, I had four employees working from twelve till, I think, seven o'clock, and then one of them left at seven or eight, and then the other three stayed there. And the reason why is with the trucks being in the road, you have to have people to man the vehicles in case the fire department had to get through there, you got to move the trucks out of the way. So that's why we had those people there. And then I had a separate crew come in at eight o'clock to get prepped and ready to go for the midnight ball drop on the rooftop. So all together, I had four come in at noon, one of them left at seven, the other three stayed from noon till one o'clock in the morning to move the trucks out of the road and that type of thing. And then the other three were involved on the rooftop with dropping the ball from the roof. So all together, I had four, five, six, seven.
Do you have a total salary cost for that?
I do, for the entire event. In overtime, it cost three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cent. If we just did the kids' ball drop, it would have been one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-six cent. So it would have saved us about two thousand, thirty-five dollars and eleven cent if we didn't do the midnight ball drop.
And what about over here with public works? And this doesn't take into consideration, please?
We have.
And it also doesn't take, and Tim's numbers did not include his equipment.
The equipment or the fuel costs for the?
Public works had six salary, or hourly employees worked in the event. Two of them worked the whole event, all fourteen hours. The other three, the other four, we had them split in half. And then I was actually, I was able to help with, work with him, because he had guys that had to be here, so they actually helped us with our setup, and then they really helped us with our teardown. So we were able to limit our, some of our needs, because we already had services here that we could split with. So it was twenty-six hundred and six dollars for my, for my salary, for my employees, and then it would have been, it would have been nineteen hundred hours if we just did the ball drop. And again, my, for the kids' drop. If Tim had people here, that's where a lot of my salary, I, you know, I let people go home. I didn't have that extra salary, but I still had all the rest of my tools and equipment that had to be.
So we're about six thousand dollars between both of your departments, and it's probably reasonable to say that there's at least another fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars in salary costs associated with police.
At least, yeah. I don't have those numbers.
I would say fifteen hundred to two thousand on the low side.
Now, to the point, though, I do want to make this caveat, which Arnold did mention in the department head meeting, his guys are going to be on anyway.
But they do, they do opt out.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Tim, we could have needed people for the bucket trucks if we didn't do the nighttime ball drop?
No, the bucket trucks were only there for the kids' ball drop, but then they'd bring the one bucket back over to the rooftop.
Yeah, I think it occurs to me that maybe times are changing. You know, I think you all just very clearly laid out the expenses, but man, I think it's, you know, I'm definitely one of the big supporters of our events, but I feel like this is an event that also involves the financials, but also the humanity of it all. You know, I ran into Caleb leaving the bank, and he was taking down the lights off the pole, and I just asked him, you know, what it was like, and, you know, and he lives in Del Mar, and just using it as examples, it's fresh in my mind, but one of those employees that was here, a long, long duration, you know, not getting home till two in the morning, you know, so that, the humanity of it's a little tough, and it's also that the, I feel like the popularity is down. You know, I just think it's, I mean, I enjoyed it tremendously, I just feel like, you know, maybe it's time for us, and I guess it's more of like a budget discussion, you know, along the lines of this, but, you know, I'm comfortable with personally, you know, retaining the ball drop. But it was, you know, I was walking back through downtown, nine forty-five, I think that one of the bands had just started, and it just, I saw a bunch of you standing, standing around, and it's like, man, it's kind of like new. I was able to go home, you know, and it's just kind of hard to not feel that a little bit, see it, and especially when the crowds are clearly dissipated from the event.
I agree. Can I, I want to make sure I'm understanding first. So what you're saying is that in the FY twenty-five budget, reducing the event to only include the kids' ball drop and cutting the midnight ball drop is what you're?
That is what I'm suggesting, you know, as one council member, I think it's worth of consideration for the group.
Well, I am, I mean, obviously, I think that, I think the proof is kind of in the pudding here, I just have a question. And kudos, I mean, I got to give kudos to that, the, I'll call it the kids' event, because it has apparently, it has grown into a sort of?
More of a family, it's more of a family.
Right. And I think that it's something that, I mean, everywhere, I mean, not everywhere, but, you know, everywhere does New Year's midnight, and whereas in Berlin, we do a six P M. kids' event, family-friendly event, and I think that's kind of unique for a cooldown. So, I mean, I agree with, with terminating the midnight ball drop, but I do have a question about the kids' event. Is it possible, and I don't know how to word this, though, if, if the group decides that we keep the kids', or we eliminate the adult event and keeping the kids, the family-friendly event? And I'll leave it to you, Ivy, but can it be like, I think originally it started in front of the Globe, and is it possible, did it not?
No, it always started in front of Harder Gold.
Because when we first started it, Harder Gold Kids was a sponsor. So with that sponsorship came, the ball was from, was going to be dropped from the bucket truck right in front of Harder Gold, it just kind of stuck. The ball, we could drop the ball wherever the bucket truck?
I'll just throw out the idea of, you know, if maybe, you know, one year it's kind of there, and then the next year it's further down by the hotel, just to kind of give everybody a piece of the, the action in town, if that's possible.
Absolutely. We could, we could, we could have the ball drop wherever you would like it.
Okay. Well, thanks. I mean, revolving ball drop. Yeah.
We could bounce the ball. No, no.
I was just going to say, since it's Tim's bucket truck, you basically agreed, Tim, that it doesn't go anywhere?
I mean, up for discussion, but I agree, I think that we should eliminate the midnight adult and stick with the family-friendly six P M. event.
And also, if I may add, I've reached out to several other municipalities who also hold midnight events, and, and every single one of them, their attendance was down more than fifty percent.
Wow, fifty percent.
Interesting. It wasn't a particularly cold New Year's this year. Usually that hasn't been.
As times are changing, I think, I was surprised that our, that it wasn't as crowded at midnight. I was, I was kind of shocked that it wasn't as busy as I was hoping it would be.
Councilmember Nichols, I've heard from Councilmember Green, Councilmember Horace, are you in favor of reducing to just the kids' ball drop and cutting the adult ball drop in FY twenty-five budget?
I would be, I would be good with that. Of course, we would not so much kids anymore.
I think you would still keep it alcohol-free?
Definitely.
Yeah, I mean.
If people want to drink, that's why we have the bars and restaurants, you know, we could go and support our businesses.
Oh, no, I'm not making, I'm not saying openly drinking, but I wouldn't necessarily kids as much as I would at this point. You know what I mean?
Right. It was, we would rebrand it, obviously.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
All right. And then Councilmember Nerr?
Yeah, I was up there at midnight, I saw, and needless to say, I was very disappointed with the amount of people. There's like two hundred people up there.
Yeah.
And I expected there would be at least a thousand or more, and it just seemed to me that there's so many New Year's Eve events going on, there's so much competition to pull people in different direction, and that's one of the reasons attendance may have been down. So based on this cost, which is really surprising to me, I'm definitely in favor of not doing the late night ball drop, but keeping the kids.
And also, not to belabor the, the point, but there, in Berlin, this was, there wasn't anything else going on in Berlin, this was it. But now Burley Oak does a keg drop, the Globe had a, the Globe was crowded all night, they had a wonderful event going on inside the Globe. So each restaurant and bar is taking their own responsibility and doing some really wonderful events that their events are better than ours sometimes, and it seemed to work out that way.
But that's okay.
I think that's great. I mean, you know, we're, we support the businesses, and, and they're doing okay.
And in the promotional stuff with the rebrand, we can accent the things that are taking place still in Berlin, just not a, a town-sponsored event. All right. Well, thank you. Anything else regarding departmentalists?
Oh, yes. I know that Kelsey's out, but.
And Jimmy's got something.
Do you want me to?
And Jamie, Jamie had something her too, right?
Might be just real quick, I wanted to just touch base, if we happen to have an update, I see in her notes here, she was speaking with LGIT, legit, about the fire hydrant, because later in the check, actually, it's like fourteen thousand dollars. So is that still ongoing, that we're looking to get?
We have, we have received a payment on it.
Oh.
They depreciated it, and we have received a payment on it.
We should have appreciated it, because of the price of fire hydrant.
It was a lot.
Seriously?
That particular fire hydrant was a bear.
It was, it was a bear, because it was eight foot deep. So I mean, they had to bring in trash boxes and an extra shorn because it was so deep. We knew that, went into it, because we, when we shut the valve off, we knew it was seven foot deep. They did send us, we have received a payment from Legit for that, and Legit is actually going after the person that hit it some more, to try to, because they didn't cover, they didn't cover about a third of that. So they're going after them to try to do a, I forget the term, if Arnold was here, he'd know all, but they're trying to go out to turn insurance and get additional.
It's an accidental accident, so they're going after the drivers. So insurance and damage on those things can take time.
Okay, great. That's, that was.
All right. Anything else regarding departmentalists? If not, we're going to let Jimmy and Jamie vote, have their time. Whichever one of you wants to go first.
I'll start real quick. Line striping was scheduled for December twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, but we had rain, we had mist. Temperatures are right, but the weather wasn't perfect. We are scheduled, we are hopeful this Thursday, that we're going to try to get in there on this Thursday. Weather's coming in tomorrow and Wednesday, hopefully it'll dry, and we'll try to potentially do it this Thursday or Friday is our set date this week, but weather could push it again.
With, are we thinking that it's going to be a one, one and done, they can get in and out, same day?
I think we can come in, we've already talked like this about nine o'clock, when school is, they're all in, and we will, we'll actually help with traffic control that kept the price down. We'll make it like one lane, we'll be able to use our radios, and then we'll have some, have them all go up, and then they can paint this side, and then we can just work with that. We can do it between, he thinks we can do it between the goals of nine and two, I think, is what the, the line striping, what actually won't take that long with the truck and the building. What'll take time is the thermal glass and putting them checkerboards down, or the piano boards down for the crosswalks and the arrows that we're using.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say with that would be just be mindful of those buses that leave from the high school still coming back and forth from Worcester Tech, because they still come through Flower Street onto Seahawk, like that midday point, you know what I mean? The early morning kids that'll go, that go to the tech, come back like around eleven-thirty, twelve, and then the bus goes out again around twelve-thirty or one to go to Worcester Tech. So I would just be, yeah, or double check with the high school on those times. You know what I mean?
Jamie?
Yes. As you're aware, Tuesday last week, we started our meter replacement program. Kate has put up on the map for us. Right now, we're in the green zone. We're still trying to develop our best plan of attack. Kate did a good job of sending out code reds to everybody. We did get a lot of people calling and like, my water's going to be off today. Just let Claire clarify everything. They are supposed to knock on your door before they shut your water off. You will get a door notice after the meters are replaced, tells you steps to do to flush out your lines. Right now, we're in Decatur Farms. The reason I wanted to start there, I know everybody laughed at me because I said it's probably one of the easier areas, because it's newer, but we wanted to progress and see how well stuff went. It's to a slow start, but that's standard, and we shouldn't be, well, they're not going to probably do much tomorrow or Wednesday, so they are working in Pokemoke as we speak, and hopefully when Pokemoke crew finishes there, they will be coming to us, and then hopefully within sixty to ninety days, we'll have majority of the meters changed out. That was a lot of larger meters.
In that section.
And actually, and actually all of them, but we should go for the green, we probably will go green, I'm thinking we're going to follow just like in a clock.
So blue will probably be best.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, because we're still having conversations at my house, okay, so listen, this is what's going to happen.
Well, you got some time, too.
He's been averaging ten minutes to change a meter. So that is very, that's very quick.
That's assuming no problems, that everyone is clear cut.
But now, just for clarity, while we're on this point, everybody should know that there's no change in the billing structure.
No, sorry.
The only thing you may experience is if you have an older meter, it may not be capturing all of the use. So if there's a change, they can always call and ask for a reread, we offer that service.
Yes.
And then that probably is your actual usage.
Yes. Some of the meters that, I know some of the meters that we have seen here, I've been here twenty-four years, and they were here before I got here. So we have a lot to work with, we have, we're going to be in here a lot at nights, because, you know, the hospital, we have to change it around midnight, Gulf Creek, we have to change it late at night, or inertia prone, you know, there might be some Saturday works because we have the schools to do. So there's a lot of planning on our end that I've been working on with Scott from Goodie Hill, because he is the general contractor for the meter replacement, the meter company Neptune and Core Main, which has been really good to work with. But there's a, there's a lot on our end we have to work on and, doing it at nighttime. So there'll be a lot. So, um, there'll be a lot more stuff coming out when we figure out progressively more and more. But hopefully, we can get moving fairly quick and get this changed out.
So Jamie, you're gonna go from green to yellow or green to brown?
I'm thinking the brown and then the, the yellow. But I, I want to, I want to, while we're talking about this, and, but I'm gonna stress this. If you have flowers, mulch, trees on top of your meter, they will tear it out because they have to get in there and replace it. If they don't, we will come by and tear it out, think it'll move it so we can get into the meter. I have preached it numerous times, that please clear your meters so we can change out the meters quickly and profacially. And that way, people don't have, we won't damage their bushes, so.
And, and this is not just related to the meter replacement, by town code, you are to leave your meter unobstructed.
Let's, let's make that clear, not just water meter, but the electric meter too. Because a lot of those are completely obstructed, it's right, Tim? I got a couple scratches to prove.
Here's the other thing, too, people don't understand, they're mad at us when we can't cut our water off because we can't find the meter too. Because they put a flower over top of it. I do, I have seen that, so, you know, people, you know, we laugh, but it's true, I've seen it numerous times. But please, clear off the top of your meters so we can get in and change the meters out. And then that way, if you have an emergency and we need to shut the water off, it helps us turn your water off quicker. Now, they are G P N, uh, they are going GPS on all of our meters. So if we have a leak, we should be able to take our cell phone or our iPads and go right to them and get within two feet, which will be perfect with bad weather and snow and stuff, but I'm just, I'm really laying that message out, so.
Jamie, can we? When we, um, when we advertise like the next section, can we include that in the, in the social media information? If it's not already on there? I don't know.
We have put that information out, but yes, we're continuing to put it out, yeah.
And it's on our bills, Michelle does a good job of putting it on our bills, please.
I'm sure, but.
I know.
Covering everything we, we can.
I know, we, we've tried to do everything we could, we've tried to prepare people for this. And some people probably said, well, I didn't read it nowhere, and Kate's done a good job of, I, I, I know the newspapers called and W O C.'s been on there about it. So if you've not seen it, then something's definitely wrong, you're not watching TV.
And so you're.
Lots of community on the website and timeline.
All right, so anything else?
Yeah, just got, so, um, just for clarity, does everybody get a day's notice of when you're coming to their house?
Uh, when we go to the next area, we'll, we'll probably try to give them, you know, we'll let them know in that next area.
Give them a time frame.
We'll give them a time frame, we can't, you know, you could, he's knocking out ten to fifteen meters a day. Um, we get in some of the older parts of town over by where the mayor lives, yours is on meter set, copper setter, so you won't be too bad. But in some of the older parts where they're hard piped in, it might take them instead of ten minutes, they might be twenty, twenty-five.
You start at what? Charlie only enjoyed that.
The, there's, the heat then started about seven-thirty, eight o'clock and worked until about four.
Thank you. All right, any, any other questions or comments regarding, regarding, ooh, man, regarding departmentals? All right, up next, comments from the public. Okay, up next, comments from the council, we'll start with, uh, what's the acronym that we're using?
V P P T.
What is it?
V P P T.
So the Vice President Pro Tem, Councilmember Nichols.
No comments.
No comments at all, or just on that?
I'm just asking for a place in New Year's resolution.
Oh, wow, all right.
He's got it hot on him, huh?
No comment.
All right, Councilmember Nairn?
I have no comments on that.
Okay, Councilmember Oris?
Just, uh, real quick, I have one, Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you, I have two actually now, thank you Natalie and team for providing a Marco update sheet. Thank you so much. Um, and then the other thing, I just wanted to revisit something mentioned towards the end of the year last year about, um, parcel fifty-two of Heron Park and the disposition of that. Uh, this would be the one with the ponds or the lagoos, um, and the disposition of that going to the Parks Commission. Uh, I'm, I'm open for another discussion on that, but I understand that they are meeting, the Parks Commission is meeting on the sixteenth. So I was wondering if that can be kind of talked about there to see if they feel that they can, um, if the group, this group decides to kind of task them with the discussion of disposition of parcel fifty-two, if that's something that they're, it's kind of right up their alley with parks, but.
The packet will be going out tomorrow, so we can add to you.
Okay, I agree. And then, um, if this group can maybe talk about it again on our next meeting on the twentieth second.
Just to clarify, the request to the Parks Commission would be if they're okay putting that under their purview as a park. Not to sell or anything like that, but it would be to deem that parcel as park.
Right.
And turn that over to the Parks Commission.
That, that, they would be in, I don't want to say in charge, but they would be overseers of a disposition.
Yes.
As a park.
Correct. All right, and that was all I have. Thank you, Councilmember Green?
Just, just a real quick reminder that, um, on the tenth, right, we have a community listening, listening session at the library at ten-thirty A M. As part of the strategic plan, I think, um, the town's done a great job getting the word out through the social media. Um, but, you know, I think it is an opportunity that we do want to hear from folks that are involved in the town. We want to hear from you, so it's the tenth, and then, um, the seventeenth, I believe, is the next one, um, across the highway. So we just wanted to remind everyone. And then, um, also note that the planning commission is, um, beginning the comprehensive plan, taking a look at that. And, um, they have put a call out for, um, public awareness as well. So I just, I think it's important that citizens know that, um, there are, are opportunities to be heard and that, um, there's a few coming up here very shortly. So they can look on the Town Berlin's website and, um, Facebook page for information.
Thank you. All right, up next, comments from the mayor. And first, before I get into, uh, a letter that I'd like you all's approval on, I know we talked a lot about New Year's Eve, but I do want to say thank you to all of our crews that worked the event, uh, Ivy, your team for helping plan the event. Whether the crowds were down or at normal limits, uh, it was, it was a great event to see everybody. It's nice to ring in the new year together as a, as a town. I'm also in agreement with consolidating the event, uh, I think that's a, a good thing to do. But, um, thank you all for the work that you do and Happy New Year.
Mayor, before we get into, just, um.
You had your change.
I know, sorry, but I think, since we're doing all calls, I believe that we have an opening on the Board of Election Supervisors.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So that needs to be built by the twenty-twenty-four election.
So if we have any, uh.
Before then, yeah.
Anybody in your districts, please pass that along, maybe we can also do a, a post on social media to get that out. But yes, we do need election workers.
No, a board of elections.
You'll probably need election workers too.
Yes, yes. But that's, you should get a little easier.
That's paid. All right, so up next is another item that I have requested the council to approve a letter of support to the Secretary of Budget and Management, Secretary Grady. Uh, this is in reference to the sports complex for, uh, the Town of Ocean City. It says, here Secretary Grady, I'm writing this letter on behalf of the Town of Berlin in support of the Town Ocean City's request for one-point-two-million, million dollars in state funding to perform a site assessment for preliminary design and cost estimates for a youth sports complex. The Maryland Stadium Authority recently completed an economic usability study for a sports complex in Worcester County. The study indicated a sports complex near Ocean City with eight to ten multipurpose tournament-quality outdoor fields and an indoor facility with ten basketball courts or, uh, twenty volleyball courts would create seven-hundred-and-twenty to eight-hundred-and-sixty new job, Maryland jobs. Additionally, the study showed that a facility of this size could produce eighty to ninety-five million dollars in state impact, economic impact, and seven to eight million dollars in state, uh, tax revenue. The Town of Berlin is represented on the Task Force of Residents, Business Leaders, and Elected Officials to review the Maryland Stadium Authority's study and make recommendations regarding the size, location, funding, and operation of a future sports complex. As Mayor, Mayor Meehan identified in his letter dated November third, twenty-twenty-three, the conceptual cost estimate for the facility is a hundred-and-fifty million dollars. The Town of Ocean City has determined that one-and-a-half million dollars is needed to perform the site assessment, preliminary design, and cost estimates for the facility. The Town of Berlin supports the Town of Ocean City's request for one-point-two-million dollars in state funding for this effort and understand that, understands that Town of Ocean City will supply the balance of three-hundred-thousand dollars in local funds. The Town of Berlin believes a regional sports complex of this size will contribute positively to the local and state economy and further leverage Worcester County as a tourism destination in Maryland. If you have any questions regarding, uh, the Town of Berlin's support for this funding request, please do not hesitate to reach out. Signed by myself, Mayor Zecton. So seeking approval on this letter, uh, it is following up on the Town of Ocean City's letter dated November third. And it's a request to put one-point-two-million dollars in the state budget, uh, for this project.
So I have a question, but, um, this was my New Year's resolution, use the mic. Can I ask the folks from here that are on this committee for an update that they can provide as appropriate on this project?
I believe that the most we can probably share is that the, myself, Councilmember Nichols, and Councilmember Green are on the task force that's mentioned in the letter, uh, in conjunction with residents, business leaders, and other elected officials. We've met twice as a group, uh, to, with a public session for each meeting. It's been reported as to the actions of those meetings publicly. I, I won't, uh, begin to report or summarize those, I think they've been covered accurately, uh, in the media. And then there have been two, uh, closed sessions associated with the properties as well, uh, and discussions, uh, related to the, the properties. Um, and that's where we stand. I don't know if there's anything else that we can really share at this time.
I think the only, I would just add is, I think that, um, you have been clear, I think we've, um, hopefully both of, all of us, um, that along this process, you know, um, the public, our, our town residents will be, have an opportunity to weigh in on this. That's something I could really add to that, you know, um, you talked about the discussions at the executive session, we can't share. Um, but I think that, um, that's just important to know that, um, our Town Berlin citizens will have an opportunity to opine on this and weigh in.
Thank you, that's a very important point. Yes, we have made sure that the concerns, uh, that have been previously noted by our citizens have been relayed. They're not lost in the discussions. I think that the Town of Berlin is well represented by the committee members. And as Councilmember Green said, there is gonna be, we have advocated for, uh, a public discussion when that time is appropriate.
I'd like to add that I think it's appropriate for us to support the initiative for a sports court complex, I think would be a great thing for Worcester County. So I think we should all support this letter. This does in no way obligates us to a location, that's yet to be decided. So that doesn't commit us in any one way or the other. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this letter.
Oh, I, I'm still have a question. That's okay. So I guess my confusion, and I'm sure that we can clear this up, is, does this letter de facto approve the request from Ocean City for their room tax increase?
This does not reference room tax at all. This is a budgetary request, not related to room tax at all. The governor has the discretionary budget to be able to put something like this in. And the appropriate channel to make that request is through the Department of Budget and Management, which the Town of Ocean City has done. This letter just supports, uh, their request.
Right, so you're referring to the room tax legislation that failed in the last legislative session in Annapolis, right? And then there's efforts, um, to reintroduce that bill, um, in the coming session. And then for that increase from five percent to six percent to take effect, the commission is about to approve that room tax increase unanimously. And I think you referred to room tax has been mentioned as a, um, potential mechanism, that's been publicly reported, um, for sports.
I just wanted to be clear on what I was quoting on this letter.
And those bills, just for clarity, uh, the session starts on Wednesday and both of those bills have been repiled in the House and Senate. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Nairn to approve the letter.
Yes.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Green, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the letter passes unanimously, thank you. Uh, we'll send that out tomorrow, um, and there are copies for the presses as well. All right, so then, let's see, uh, comments from the press. No, Charlie? All right. And then up next is Vice President Burrell.
Oh, did we do that?
We did, yes. Yep, it was number six. So a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Nichols.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Oris, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Fifty-three minutes.
Not a record, but.